You're ready to go.
Okay, we have a quorum, call the meeting in order. Excuse me, reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Most main second discussion additions corrections. Governance Committee and rubber meeting. All favor. Any opposed? Harry. This is special meeting we had. Minutes. Your motion. Move it. Discussion additions corrections. Lacking any on favorite. Foes. Harry. We'll move right up. Have. I have Brian running here from. CMI. Thanks for coming.
I guess you go first.
Yeah.
Let you want to sit through the whole thing. No, I'm good. I had a conversation with Mike earlier this week and that's with Justin earlier today. Denkovic, just three different things we want to touch on and then. I guess we'll end up coming in with some kind of overview of what we're actually doing over the milk plant. Denkovic wants to buy some land from us. We purchased through one of the LDA agreements. The plan of one, the one we did in two thousand twenty-three. She included lot four, which was. About ten acres where we put all our trucks now. They want an acre of that or so. They can head on to their current facility. I think they already talked to you about it. I know they've talked to the town about it, so. We're fine with it. It just takes a lot of paperwork and apparently affects pilot and it also affects like our loan papers and. The lot lines and everything that what we own versus what they own, so. We're going to go through a process of that. That's one thing. The other is. We're. We haven't even finished our other plant. We're investing some more in our current CMI plant to support. The current facility or the what we call the Eagle Drive Holding facility. So we're spending a lot more money. And got approval from our members and our. My board and everything. Which means we need some more relief on sales tax with the pilot, so. Justin kind of outlined all the information he needs. We gave some numbers to you guys or at least to him as to what. The capital investments were, but it doesn't include like with building costs and some of the other things. So I guess we have to have detailed against the last LDA, kind of like a line item comparison as to what we had before versus what we are now. So we we're not done with the bits, so we need to make sure. We actually know that final number before we send it over to you, so we want to guess. So that'll probably be happening in the next two to three weeks where we get those final things in, so. I would say by the next board meeting, we'll have something. Or maybe even before that that we can give you that. Maybe you can look at and hopefully improve. But obviously then we have to.
Those the milk tanks.
No, it's an actual investment in the building. Tanks is one of the things we're buying, but there's actual equipment we're putting into an open room. A fairly significant millions of dollars of investment in our current facility at the CMI where the powder plant is. That's going to be put onto the property, which that then brings me to the third thing. Because we're going to be putting in some some equipment that goes over the line of the property line between EDH and CMI. And those were two different lines. We have to change that property line. We have to get approval from you guys on. So. Yes. Two different property lines we gotta get changed. And get it, even though we own both of them, we have to get approval. And then also that affects. So you need to have all those plans and you also need to have all the the capital spend. Thought we might be able to have it today, but we actually have what you know, the equipment and what the sales tax impacts are, but that's not enough. Justin, you want to add anything to that because you're the one that kind of told us what we need.
Well, that's a good summary. Yeah, we had a good talk with today Brian and Amy from CMI along with. Charlie from Denkovic. The the process right now. For the IDA to look at is. An immediate request from CMI and Eagle Drive Holdings to attend to the lot line adjustments inside the park. And provide assistance. For the equipment leasing and other expansions going on right now. Within the next two to three months, it it seems as though. Denkovic should get its approvals from the town of Aurelius. Which would lead to another adjustment of the CMI pilot to take that acre out and and place it within the Denkovic project. So we're we're kind of seeing a two-step process here and. Today Brian's outlined all of that and. We'll have plenty to do for the next few months, it seems.
I do think we're going to try and do it all at once, but you know, if we can't get it all.
Actually, you're not really asking for anything tonight.
What's that?
You're not asking for anything tonight, Ken.
No, I thought I was, but now I.
It's kind of.
Before I got here, I guess we're not.
So can I ask for the sales tax relief? Is that for the current project or you've got?
It's you know, the current project, we already had that. This is above and beyond what we're spending the impact, so we don't pay sales tax, so an increase in our pilot for sales tax relief. Or is it construction of the?
It's not a new project. It's it's going inside the second pilot.
Well, it's it's added to the the project. It's on the CMI side, though, where we're doing it, so. EDH was when we came in Eagle Drive Holdings is the new aseptic dairy facility. We're putting other equipment into our. Powder plant that's going to. Help the new plant, but it's actually in a different plant, so. There are actually two different projects, but they're both going on at the same time. That makes sense? So if it falls under the, we had two LDA agreements, so it'll fall under the CMI. Not the Eagle Drive Holding, so the Keegan Milk Ingredient LDA, it'll fall under that. For the tax, sales tax relief. It's not a little bit of money. It's a lot.
Sounds like it's down to wire stuff right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
So just just before Brian goes, Justin was able to put together a couple of different initial project resolutions related to the request here. So we can advance this and moving forward. If I'm understanding correctly, can we still proceed with that intent, Justin?
That's right. There's a little more detail we're looking for on project costs and things like that, but the the resolutions that we. Share here today will get the process going.
Thanks. So with the initial project resolutions as drafted right now, it'll allow us to have deeper discussions with you so we can firm up those numbers and figures. And advance in having a public hearing and what we, you know, eventually agreed to at the end of it there, so. Right. And it helps us move forward and pace with what you guys have.
I agree on that there.
So with that being said, we do have two separate resolutions, one for CMI, one for EDH. Would you like to advance those? And with that being said, I'll have to go through our formal process. Get the overview and do a little call.
Sure.
So a motion?
I'll move. Okay. This discussion.
So I'll start with Eagle Drive Holdings LLC twenty-two project, twenty-twenty-five project boundary and scope amendments. Resolution of the Cuba County IDA Agency. Accepting the supplemental application for Eagle Drive Holdings LLC with respect to a certain project. Two, authorizing the scheduling and conduct of a public hearing with respect to the project. Three, describing the forms of financial assistance being contemplated by the agency. Four, authorizing the negotiation of certain agreements relating to the project. Looking towards that.
I'll move it to discussion. I think we're sorry if I moved.
Right.
Yeah.
You're on.
All right.
Further discussion. Chat.
No.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Ben Vitale.
I guess.
Mr. Robert Shea.
Yes.
Mr. John Latnition.
Yes.
Mr. Ray Lockwood.
Yes.
Miss Donna Adams.
Yes.
Miss Gina Sveno.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Ryan Flush.
Yes.
Thank you.
All voting aye. Motion approved.
Moving on to the next resolution, this is for Cuba Milk Ingredients LLC twenty-two expansion project, twenty-twenty-five project boundary and project scope amendments. Resolution of the Cuba County Industrial Development Agency, one, accepting supplemental application of Cuba Milk Ingredients LLC with respect to a certain project. Two, authorizing the scheduling and conduct of a public hearing with respect to the project. Three, describing the forms of financial assistance being contemplated by the agency and four. Authorizing the negotiation of certain agreements relating to the project.
I'll move. Back in. Discussion.
Was that all there is to the resolution? It seems like you were going to read them more.
There's plenty more, but I'm happy to share that. Five pages.
Further discussion. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Ben Vitale.
Yes.
Mr. Robert Shea.
Yes.
Mr. John Latnition.
Yes.
Mr. Ray Lockwood.
Yep.
Miss Donna Adams.
Yeah.
Miss Gina Sveno.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Ryan Flush.
Yes. All voting aye. Motion carry. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
So I have one other question. Kind of related if I can.
Sure.
So. What used to be Grover. Will they be coming to us also for?
I was planning to speak to that later in back, but I can speak to that now.
Up to you. Your choice. You're the boss.
Well, I well, as we're already on the topic here, part of what Brian made comment to there is they're selling a small portion of lot four when their the existing trucking depot is. To Denkovic. What their intent is is to build a warehouse on their existing property and also needed a little bit of lot four to make it all work there. They do intend to apply for IDA benefits to make that project more financially feasible. As that comes in, we'll also be taking a look at their existing. Pilot to see if there's some room there to extend that a little bit as well, so we do it. Once more anticipate and application come in over the next month and for representatives to speak to that project as well.
Very good.
So with the extension of the project, the consideration of it, then that would then means that we will also be considering like whatever sales tax relief. You know, whatever as well, like as long as they're done. Okay, is that, well, I guess. Not trying to put the. Heart before the horse, but is it's standardly would that be like we'll consider on a go-forward basis of the extension or are you going to also factor in? You know, what has been done so far, like? Does that make sense?
Addition.
Yeah, is it an addition? Yes, thank you. In addition to or just holistically?
We'll have to see when they come forward with your plans.
Well, this is for Denkovic. It's a new project. Because it's new bill.
So it'd be a new pilot.
But from the standpoint of CMI, because remember they're giving up part of what they have right now.
Well, that's that's part of why they came in today is through this entire process of. Moving around some of their their borders relative to lot lines, all of that, it does impact. Our existing pilots with them, so we've got to make sure we have that accurate as possible on our end.
It should it should be really material to paperwork.
Yeah.
No.
It's just lawyers don't.
Yeah.
What do you think?
I think so.
Ben, why did you make the finger for the money? Because.
Because that's what.
Lawyers, I know, but I know we got, we understand that.
Probably got me a little bit of money for us too.
For us too.
Yeah, they give, we'll get pilot use.
I like when money's for us too.
We'll get tax and tax and use out of it. Further questions? Okay. Back to the agenda. Three bills communications.
Well, that's me. Hey, everybody. I'm Grace. I don't think I've actually met any of you guys yet, but I'm filling in for Tracy tonight. So for bills, they're really just the typical monthly bills with a couple of exceptions. The first of these is that MRB has four bills. Two of them are for administrative services and then the other two are for. The market insight study that we were completing for you guys. I'd also like to point out here that in the treasurer's report included a little bit later in your packet, it says there are only three bills for MRB group, but there are actually four in this packet. One of the other. Bills of note is the one for Danable and the key for audit fees. Their initial billing is eighty-five hundred dollars. They're contracted for fifteen thousand. So we can expect another bill. There was also a bill from the Chamber of Commerce for. Michael Miller's. Meeting there and that was twenty dollars. And then there is the Highlander final change order, which is to the tune of twenty-two thousand dollars eight hundred, sorry, twenty-two thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and forty-four cents. Which does not include the retainage of sixty-three thousand nine B three dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Fast up, but the Highlander is for what? It's a change order for what?
Yeah, so what what the change order is, we just came through actually a couple of months ago, but going back and forth to Steve on it was how exactly do we want to handle this here? Went through the change order itself, got an over-under report. On top of that, also received approval from the EDA because it had to be approved by EDA, which was done just this last week. To put that through. So it it was a lot of review and time to go through that. With the change order approval today, that is going to tee us up for final reimbursement and grant closure over the next couple of months.
They pretty much post everything to bad.
Of outstanding amount, the last thing to go through is going to be retainage as discussed with the board. That's. Involved with a couple of other things, including our ESD grant for further discussion.
So you you haven't come to terms.
Not quite yet. We're waiting on a couple of other variables to come down the pike and I can speak to that a little bit later in the meeting here.
Right, right. They're answering?
No, but that's all right. So this was discussed at a prior meeting.
Okay, all right. Steve's not on today, so I'm gonna. Go on this, that's possible.
It's kind of a mechanism so that we can get to grant money.
It's also, you know.
Is there a motion to pay the bills?
Well, with the update, because MRB three bills will date it to the four to represent the four that Grace mentioned. And then, yeah, I'd be supportive of that.
Is there anywhere we can split, split and separate the these?
Do anything you want. You want all that bill.
Well, we can separate it to a different bill.
Sure.
So I I will.
Oh, there's a motion?
Go ahead.
No, I will, I will. Do a motion to pay. This first motion is to is to pay all bills. Except the Highland bill at this point.
There a second?
Well, we could have another another motion to pay that one.
Got it.
Discussion on paying all bills except Highlander. All in favor? Any opposed? Harry. Done.
Well, now there's a motion to pay the Highlander bill.
Is there?
But I'll make the motion to pay the Highlander bill.
Okay.
Yeah.
There a second?
Second.
Post main section. Discussion. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Anything?
I think.
Okay. All voting in favor with one of the discussion, Harry. Any other, well, there's one. No other discussion. Executive Director update.
As usual, you have my written reporting put it in your packet, but as always, I've got some walk-on notes. I'm gonna go through a number of project updates we have here. We do have quite a bit of activity going on. First, Finger Lakes Rail Public Hearings have been scheduled for the third time now. We've gone through a couple of different issues related to not just getting. Firm agreement from Finger Lakes Rail as we've negotiated with our peer counties. Relative to this project, but also issues with the citizen. Of a cyber attack and how they now put out legal notices since they're not thinking every day has become a little more complicated. But we're in touch with. Harris speech as we're doing more public hearings moving forward that we gain this out. But as you may have seen, over the last week, we have that rescheduled for the second week of April. It's going to be three hearings, one in Senate, one in Auburn, one in the village of Fuga. Anticipated closing will be in May. Sunburn Sales, a public hearing is scheduled for April second, one o'clock, and Town Hall in Aurelius. Anticipated closing also being in May. For the sunny solar projects, if you recall this back in the fall, we partially closed on that with sales and new tax exemption. We're looking to wrap up on pilot portion of that project. I'll be meeting with the project lead. March thirty-first to get a, you know, firm understanding of what their timeline is. I anticipate it not this quarter, but probably middle of second quarter is my guess there. We did already discuss. You can milk. At their intended project moving forward here, similar to Dunkerbeck. Last year, if you recall, up in Sterling, there was much smaller solar project that was proposed. They came in, they applied. They rescinded their application and part of the reason for that was a change in ownership. They've since reached out on behalf of the new owners to inform us that they are planning to once again reapply for IDA benefits, timing of which is somewhere as in the second quarter. I did ask them that. What sort of assurances do we have relative to change of ownership again? As the board does not work favorably on that. We were informed that the new owner has no intent to change ownership anytime soon, so at least there's some good faith there.
It's a.
At this time.
At this time.
This time, so, but I was at least trying to make the point clear. We didn't like that coming in and then a few months later it already changed.
It's typical of them, no.
Right. Moving on. From some of our. Other areas here at the meeting with Jenny Haynes, we've had two larger projects in particular relative to relocation of an existing company within Cuban County. I'm gonna be meeting with them again end of. March, beginning of April, we're taking a look at county IDA owned sites as well as city sites. There and we also met with an attraction project. Or prospect rather last week, taking a look at again IDA. Sites as well as city owned sites, so that's a much larger manufacturing facility. Within the ag industry. So hopefully some good news on that and coming there. As noted for. Highlander here, we do have the. Change order requests and what we're waiting on. At the moment, we've received approval from ESD to put in process grant dispersment, but we still don't have. Firm. Clarification if the WMBE waiver has been approved. Still waiting on feedback there, but in the meantime, they are advancing payment of that. The expected payment timeframe is June, July for that grants a little over two hundred eighty grand. As that's being finalized relative to the WMBE waiver. We're in tandem trying to wrap up the EDA grant as we're considering. Our retention fees and further discussion with Highlander to get all of that wrapped up, so it's my hope. The next couple of months will be all button all three up there. Part of wrapping up the EDA grant will require a sign off from RN. CNS as well as Highlander for final grant documents, so we're all acting to be in heart beat to make make that. Completed there. Wrapping up here, some at the higher level engagement been going on, both Center State and ESD have been engaging the region a little more in depth in the last few months. Most recently with Center State, they. Had a particular focus relative to collaboration in the broader region with specific emphasis on. Initiatives related to micron, what they're doing for. Education, workforce development related initiatives. But also sharing with us some of the more detailed information they've received for. Supply chain companies, which is pretty good, so we're vetting that process. With some of our partners to see what. Within Cuba County would actually complement what they're looking for. Very similar meeting with Empire State Development. They're really looking to push forward greater regional collaboration there as the. Governor's budget comes out in the next month or so here. I think there's going to be some really great opportunities for us to take a look at. Just waiting for that budget to come out. Last thing Wells College. We all know it's gone through. It's called for offers that was completed last Thursday. Nothing. We've heard directly at this time, but keeping in the air close to the ground as as things shake out. It's my guess, as we touched at our special meeting, that it's probably going to be a month. Or something to shake out. So as information comes in, I'd be more than happy to share with the board and obviously what we. Read to is we're we're willing participants here, but. We don't know what we don't know. So we'll just wait on that. So that's it on on my end, with the exception of working to complete both Paris. Reporting by three thirty-one and getting the audit wrapped up. All of that aside, happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Is there? Are there micron committee meetings happening or what? I mean, I heard a little bit of a. Something about them starting up again or whatever, but.
At the local level, if so, I'm not aware of it or not invited to it at this time. Regionally, there's still a lot of. Liberation there.
Do you know if there was one recently? I thought I saw an email. For last week that maybe Jenny was going to, I could be wrong.
So the only committee that was started under David Cool that I think is still very active is the House of Committee.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that goes beyond micron. That's more of a general business, so a very large need and they're so actively engaged on that topic.
Yes, okay.
Any other questions, Roy? Thank you. Reported treasurer.
Sure, so there are for the February profit and loss statement, there are only two main things for revenue. The first of these was the five hundred dollar application fee from Sunburn Sales. As well as four thousand six hundred six dollars earned in interest. And then there were a couple of expenses of note as well. The first of these was two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. This was for the hotel for the ADC conference. And then there was also a reconciliation discrepancy of about two cents, which just came from a bank cashing a check for two cents different from the amount that it was written for. So Tracy. Fixed that and noted it. On the balance sheet, the accounts receivables other than. What's there for grants and pilots are mostly just from project administration fees specifically from. The closing on the Sun East projects and then those fees that were deferred for CMI and EDH. And then pilots, we received all of the outstanding pilot payments and we set up the the dispersment forms for all of those to go out at this meeting.
It'll be out tomorrow, I promise.
Okay, so that. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion, questions?
Yeah, I have a key bank checking account, thirty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. What do we use that for?
Use it for anything.
So. And will they charge us? Did they charge us? Is there any reason we can?
We we closed that, so I think it's just sitting in the court books as an outstanding account.
All right, so.
We have at one point four or five different.
Right, so did we actually close it, you think?
To my knowledge, we closed all of that and moved the majority of the money. This is going back to.
Right, okay.
Three. It is in the Cube the Lake account and shuttered the various other. Accounts with different banks.
Okay, and then my other question with this is the generations that we have, did we receive any communications from them?
We haven't since their intended acquisition, which is supposed to go through second quarter.
Right.
Issue.
And has ESL reached out and can they have, can they have municipal money?
Justin, can a credit union have municipal money?
No, I don't think they're qualified to be.
Right.
Yeah.
So. So if they're doing it, we're gonna have to move it from generations anyways. Where I'm. That's down the road. Where where I'm heading is I. I think we should. I agree, and I think we should take the advice of our auditor. And leave it up to you to open an account. Whichever bank you want. For the express purpose of. Depositing and then dispersing. Pilot payments.
And that's what, that's what we're using generations checking for right now.
But, but do you co-mingle that with any, any, anything else?
We pulled all of that out last year and we now use Cuba Lakes checking as our general operations. And we use the prior generations checking just for pilots.
But you've got hundred and twelve thousand.
That's pilot.
That's, that's all pilots.
Yes, and we just signed the checks today, it's all gonna go out tomorrow. So next month it should be near zero.
Your weekend's clear then.
Great idea though, John.
Yeah, oh, good.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Further questions? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh. Harry. New business, we'll skip office space for right now.
Well, we went through, uh, the initial project, project resolutions, the real estate IDA park update, um. This was put on the agenda prior to having the resolutions prepared for due to milk ingredients. And we have already touched on the decade back project, so both of the two upcoming ones and we're obviously. Moving forward with, uh, sunburn sales, so a lot of activity going on over in the park right now, it's gonna be a busy year. Um, but moving down from that. Uh, next item, sub item C, uh, F L X support, so this is, uh, finger lakes. Should be in your packet probably near, near the end. Grace, do you know if this needed for the pack?
Um, it should have.
In the email?
Yeah.
I know that, so I brought it. That's the one from the Zolio, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it was in there somewhere.
Yes, I saw you in the middle.
Is that the one you got from here, Andy, or the one you printed?
No, no.
Twenty one. I think it's.
Twenty twenty one.
Yeah.
Page, it's kind of in the middle, page twenty twenty one.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Yes, um. They're, they're looking for, um, support from different, uh, counties. They, they help promote here the. Price tag they put on it here requested amount of seventy five hundred dollars. I brought that to our. Here agencies here notably, uh, CCDC and Auburn IDA. Um, unfortunately Tracy's not here to, you know, share feedback in those organizations. It was, uh. My interest in asking Tracy could. Pass that along to see if we can just have some sort of joint there if all the boards and my board here. Know your level of appetite is, uh, to provide some financial support this, uh. This firm.
Can we actually do that? Can we? Donate, can Justin, can we donate to another? Another firm?
And donate in what fashion, what, uh?
Well. Operational support. And it, it's not. It's not specific just to this county. Because they suppo- they support a region rather than a county, right?
Similar past B D C.
The, the IDA can enter into a services agreement with the county, much like CDA used to. You have to help market and things like that. But that doesn't involve cash going from IDA to, to county. Uh.
Have you, I'm sorry, Justin, have you seen this? Request? Or Rick, have you seen the request?
I haven't seen the, um.
Yeah, I haven't seen it, I'm looking for it.
Details, I can scroll through, but if it's a, a request for funding support. Uh, the IDA can't. Provide a direct grant. Or a loan to anybody, but it can pay for services. So if that organization is gonna promote Kyuga County, promote jobs, promote economic development. On your behalf, you can pay them for that and it's not uncommon to see. IDAs supporting chambers, uh, and other organizations as a marketing. Mechanism, but all you would do is not call it a grant, uh, or a gift or a loan, it would be for services.
Part of the reason it's. Hold up, it's a marketing.
Marketing proposal, okay. Okay, supposedly they're giving us something strange. At the service.
So Michael, you said that, um, they've asked other agencies to support this one?
I, I asked when I, I spoke, uh, to Mike about this, I had asked him if. You know, if he was comfortable with me approaching their agencies within the county to see. You know. Board is willing, um, if you can do some sort of joint. Uh. Proposal, enforcement of that, uh, for what they requested here, so. I haven't heard that directly from Tracy between CCDC and Auburn IDA. I want their thoughts on, but wanna make sure, uh, you were all aware of that here today and. In lieu of doing something with them, wanna do something yourself, what amount?
So is the total amount that they're asking for seventy five hundred or is it that they're asking us for seventy five hundred and they probably need more from others? Is this a total amount?
What I was trying to understand is they're. Reaching out to all the areas that they operate in. Um, for caring Cuban County, uh. This was the, the full amount.
So are you recommending we wait to see what everybody else is doing to see if there's one amount we all contribute together? Is that what your thought is?
I, I think that would be prudent and. Uh, because it's going to benefit the entire county, so if it's, you know, helpful for CCDC and the Auburn IDA, then. Everybody should.
Well, it's, it's not just the county, is it, is it the whole Finger Lakes area? Yeah.
Um, this is the first time I'm hearing of them, so I'll have to look that up to see exactly, you know, when all.
So would you like to table it until next month?
I think.
Yeah. Either there or.
There's now motion to the. I'm gonna just hold it up.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm also thinking that we could possibly. Authorize Mike a certain. Dollar value in case. He gets other information from the other organizations. Um, but. It doesn't have to be the, the total, could be like two thousand or twenty five hundred. And then.
It's something can wait till next month, right?
I'd say so, okay, sorry.
Alright. Let's, the. Let's, we're. The next one is. But is that like?
So, uh, Tracy and I met with, uh, this firm. You have information on it in your packet.
Right.
Here, so what they, this basically does in essence is they've worked with EDOs. Economic development organizations throughout. Uh, the nation and they're basically a plug in to your existing website for site selection work. So within Cuba County. What it will do, uh, if it's on our website. Is it basically has web callers that says. Gina, Spino and Venture Brokerage Group have X number of properties listed. And it categorizes that onto the website and it's also pulling from different brokers as well. To pull all of that information into one place and the big thing IDAs. You know, as we're going through anything is what's available out there all the time and. I'm sure Gina can speak to that. Uh, pretty well, so it's, it's basically a clearinghouse for what that is. It breaks it up into the type of property you may be looking for. Whether it's vacant land, brownfield, commercial, industrial, office. It puts all of that in there and would also have a layer to put. Our own specific properties that. We currently have on our site that was out, this is what the county IDA has, but we right now are not. Pulling in anything else, so when a prospect. Or, uh. Like existing client is requesting information on new land, what we're doing in the back ends, exactly what the sort of solu- solution. Is seeking here. What this proposal is saying is if we signed up in addition to the Auburn IDA. They'll give us a, uh, a cut price at, at seven grand there. So, uh. Wanted to bring it to your attention as, as sitting down with, uh. Tracy that, um, her part for the Auburn IDA is something to evaluate. I do think this is something we can and should have, but I think this is part of a broader conversation. As we're thinking about doing any sort of website upgrades.
Is that a one time fee? Yeah.
No, so there's the, there's the initial fee and then they do an ongoing fee for service maintenance and any.
I agree with you, as we update what we need to, that's a good time to look everything at one time.
Right, and there's two or three different firms that do this, so, uh, another one that I'm pretty familiar with that state actually uses. Is called Zoom Prospector. I spoke with them a little bit last year. I've told them to wait as we're waiting on Bardo County. Uh, discussions for countywide economic development. Of what, what can and should be there and should it be on our website or somebody else's, I can't say, but. I do know for our purposes, we've discussed a little bit over the last few months, you said. A website is a little, uh, aged at the moment, should you punch it up a little bit, I would say something like this being on it. Lots of other EDOs have it. For one of you who don't, so it becomes a resource issue on our end and.
Yeah.
Uh, little bit of frustrating fees for site selectors, so, you know, we're going to this site to find information like that. We don't wanna, you know, scramble. So.
I, I think it's valuable. Um. But I think. I think we should wait. Think there's gotta be some commitment from the county. As to general economic development and. Um, I think this is a marketing tool also and. I think at some point. If the county were to come forward and commit to. A one stop and this would be. Uh, very advantageous and helpful in the entire marketing. Concept. So I would, I would say we table it for now, but. Keep it fresh.
Yeah, and I'd definitely be interested in, Michael, you did say that you had. Previously spoken with Zoom, was it? Was it the other company?
Called Zoom Prospector, um, I've actually included the link on our current website. Uh, what, what's interesting about that particular tool is. I have it drilled down to Cuba County, goes through our workforce, it goes through demographics. Existing businesses, education, attainment, et cetera, et cetera. There's. A portion there you, we can access that says here's available sites in Cuba County. Uh, how I was able to drop it into our site is Empire State Development uses it. So I just pulled it down from them and filtered it to Cuba County, so. Um, anybody who's on our website can click on that and it gives you Cuba County stats. But not sites.
Okay. Welcome labor mitigate patient payment.
Yeah, so we worked through this last year with a, to take their focus on updating our local labor.
With solar.
For solar in particular, but as more and more projects we've discussed with have voiced issue, uh. With our policy, most recently sunburn sales. Um, one of the discussions I, I have, I can't, I forget with which board number at the moment. Is why don't we expand the policy to, to all industry? And we can. Uh, institute basically a stepped portion that says if you abide by X percent. Will give you relief here, but overall, so. Saying this is the policy you have, this is what we want at the end of the day, but if you can't do it. We can put together some layers of what that may look like. So for solar in particular, it's one percent of the total construction budget. If that's ag manufacturing, should it be, you know, half of one percent? There should be some factors put into it, so there's something to work.
And, and I think we talked about, the thing about is when you're looking at solar. You're not getting the construction jobs, you're not getting any jobs.
Right.
Or something like. For example, the milk plant. You're more interested in the long term than the jobs, than the construction jobs. Yeah, I, I think some kind of a buyout would be good.
Yeah, and what's, I, I think, uh, the beauty of having this set up here is the intent is to re. Deploy these funds back into workforce development. You say there's a gap here, this is why. These developers are saying they can't meet our objectives. It would then be on us to work with our, uh, workforce partners, say, here's the gaps we're seeing. We've got some money and we would like to invest in this. So, and I think it's a nice circular.
The other thing I like about it is we're not just giving away for.
Right.
You know, we've got a policy and.
And then, and we've.
Yeah.
For the number of meetings I've sat through with this board, some of those discussions are pretty difficult.
Yes.
To go through. So, um, I can work with our attorneys to get something prepared, uh, for you react to, uh, going into next month. And, uh, if that goes well, we can put that into our. Our project agreements.
Yeah, like I said, the solar one bothers me because there's no permanent jobs.
Mm-hmm.
So I think like they have one percent's probably at the peak.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe there's offsets if they're creating permanent jobs.
Right. So, but we'll look to put together some model there that gives some flexibility and.
Yeah.
You know.
But it would be nice if this. More or less a cut and dry policy and rule. So we don't have.
Yeah, don't like we're targeting it one segment.
Right. Yeah, exactly, exactly right.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll work on that and, uh, look to get, uh, something together over the next month here.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's great, Mike.
Hey, do we need to take any action on the audit?
Yep, I need to accept it so we can finalize it.
Yes.
Okay.
That motion?
Motion to accept the.
John, is that second audit?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, motion seconded the, uh. Audit review. And the Paris reporting updates.
And then we're gonna address the findings.
The what?
We'll, we'll address the findings.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I think we're in the, we're right in the midst of addressing them.
Yes.
I, I think most of our issues go back to.
Yeah.
That one bookkeeper we had, is that correct, Mike? Discussion. On favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. MRB Mall Property Market Study Presentation.
Grace, you're up. I don't know if you're able to carry your screen.
Um, yes, give me one. Sorry, ten million things open.
This is the, what we had approved to have. An analysis done, see.
Yes.
If it makes sense to do anything with that property.
Right, so, um, to Gina's point, the, the high level recap before Grace digs into, uh, the market study results here. We were taking a look at property we own next to Finger Lakes Mall, it's roughly sixty acres. You bought it back in twenty sixteen, we haven't done a whole lot with it. Um, what we got into last year is after a lot of different discussions, what I was hearing from, uh, some of our Bardo. Players in the area was really they need warehousing. As we got into deeper discussion around that, what the board, uh, elected to do is to say, well, why don't we do. Study on the property to see what's the highest and best use there. And with that, uh, also could be a, a, a site analysis, both of which may be leveraged to apply for grant funds from the state. To improve the property, so having this done, uh. Really does give us the ability to apply for those funds to improve the property moving forward. Grace here is going to give the overview of what that, uh, the results of the monkey studies were and what the proposed site, uh, assessment. Layout, uh, maybe.
Yep, so, um, there's a lot of information in this report, I'm just gonna go over some of the high level stuff, the, the. Key. Findings, I suppose, um, so forgive me if I scroll past things without, um. Findings, I suppose. Um, so forgive me if I scroll past things without um. Discussing them. Um, but some of, so I'm gonna skip here to household income distribution, for example. Uh, but the town has the lowest share of households that earn below twenty five thousand dollars each year at only eleven point two percent. Um, and they also have the highest share of households earning above a hundred and a hundred thousand dollars a year at forty three point one percent. Uh, compared to the other geographies in this analysis. Um, which I skipped over, but there the the town of Relius, Keoga County and the central New York regions are the comparison geographies here. Um. Yep, um for educational attainment, um. In the town, about eighty nine point eight percent of residents have a high school diploma or equivalent. Um, twenty four point three, so about a quarter have a bachelor's degree or higher. Um, this is pretty well educated um in comparison, but the region as a whole. Um, just has a higher percentage of more highly educated um. Individual. Sorry?
I'm sorry, uh what page in one?
Eight.
This is on page eight, yeah.
I asked you.
Uh, but. Yep.
If you didn't print it from your email, you probably don't have it, right?
No.
Yeah.
Michael, could you then enlarge the screen? Or could we ask Grace to do that a little bit? Sorry.
One turn out at least.
Thank you.
Oh.
Is that better?
I think that's good.
Thank you.
The E pack, it was a hundred twenty pages, so.
Yeah, it's a bit much.
Right, every.
Right.
Um, but the the difference in the regions more uh higher percentage of. The population with um higher education is really just because there are more um colleges and universities outside of. The county that are present within the region. Um, I'm gonna skip down to commuting. Um. So Keoga County has a net out commuting population of about seven thousand five hundred and ninety one individuals. Um, the primary outflows here are to Anadaga County um at about three point. Uh, sorry, thirty five hundred individuals, uh Tompkins County at. Just over a thousand individuals and Monroe County at uh about six hundred individuals. Um, and that just makes sense, you know, taking into account. Cities um and where jobs are. Um, all of the occupations. Or all occupations within the county um had net out out commuting flows um. But there were a couple um. That might indicate like a shift toward Keoga County. One of these was um transportation warehousing. There was. You know, a reduction in negative net out commuting with small job uh growth there. Um. Gonna skip down to the industry analysis. Um, so the top industries overall in the county. Um, are government, healthcare and social assistance, or sorry, government, healthcare and social assistance and manufacturing. Um, these are also gonna be the fastest growing industries throughout the next decade when you look um at job count. Uh, in total, the county has twenty eight thousand, just about jobs, um which was a four percent de- decrease from twenty fourteen. Um, and then. These projected changes um are an eleven percent increase in the next decade with um a gain of about three thousand jobs here. Um, the top industrial space using sectors are warehousing and storage. Navigational measuring, electromedia and control instrument manufacturing. And couriers and express delivery services and that is detailed on page fifteen, if you're curious. Um, skipping through a bit more. The workforce analysis really showed that. The key takeaway from this really is that the self-reported skills in the job seeker profiles um from one of our data sources showed that. Individuals within the county are more well matched to the industrial space using sectors than they are. Um, to the office or retail space using sectors. Um, which are some of those detailed industry analyses that I skipped past. And then when we look at real estate, um just coming down here more. Um, the real takeaway here is that there. Industrial real estate market is somewhat volatile, um but increasing market rent prices suggests that there's a little bit of unmet demand. Um, and then the recommendations from this report. We also, sorry, skipping ahead again. Um, we also talked to a couple of. Businesses throughout Keoga County and um. You know, closer to the town as well as some regional organizations um, which were used to inform our recommendations. Um. In addition to. The data that we had. Um, so the recommendations are really to leverage the growth and investments in the semiconductor industry to work and attract. Uh, to work to attract a tier one or tier two supply chain business. Uh, for micron, uh ideally, we uh you would make this the site as shovel ready as possible. Um, and then we also heard that it would be great, um or one of the highest and best uses for the site would be if it could be. Um, a concrete plant would be great, uh which is very specific. Uh, but that would also just require reading a handful of years to get the right buyer. So it's a give and take. Uh, data also supported the use of the site for medical offices, um but that also sort of brings in the challenges of. Building to suit medical needs. Um, the office space could also be used for professional services like architecture, engineering and insurance services. And then one of the other recommendations here is that warehousing really. Uh, came to the forefront as an immediate need for businesses in the area. Um, some of the things IDA could do here is to look into having developers build. Warehousing space if it's too costly um for IDA to handle on their own. Uh, they could also convene businesses in the area who may be amenable to sharing that warehousing space. Um, and it would really represent the immediate solution to the site, um but it's not necessarily the highest and best use. And then. Are there any questions here before I jump to the initial site layout that we have?
Go ahead.
Cool. Bring this over. Let me know if you can see this. If it stops working out. Y'all can see this still? Okay, cool. Um, it might be a little bit worse of quality on like if it's printed out for you guys, um. Just because it is pretty detailed here. Um. Okay, but so first things first, we have lots wanting to here right by this road. Um, these would be reserved for more commercial or retail uses because they all are smaller. Um, and right along that roadside property. Um, and then.
If I if I can interrupt you here, as everyone is taking a look at this. When she says lots one and two, it's proposed lots on the existing land.
Yes.
Home and as you're going along here, um I think.
Yes.
That's would be the proposed access road, not there now, but that would be the proposed access road. That's that's it, Grace. That that's all I'm gonna interject with.
No, I appreciate that. Yeah. So when I say lots, you know, one to, this is just how our engineers labeled it for easier understanding. Um, and then there is. This proposed roadway here, which would require a new traffic light. Um, and also negotiating with the mall to create some mall access points over. Um, to their existing property. Lot three here would um. Be focused on the warehousing need for the community. Um, the proposed building site size came from our conversations with local businesses. Um, so it's about two hundred and twenty five thousand square feet and includes room for parking and loading. Um, and it looks like it's about ten point six acres. And then lot four over here, um we decided to keep as a. You know, just just sort of not subdivided basically. Um, to really address this need within the region for larger lots above ten acres. Because there really are not many. Um, and so keeping it. As one larger uh parcel allows. Um, for the potential to meet some of that need within the region. Um, as micron comes online and and those sort of businesses start to um look for sites in the area. Um, and then I'm gonna scroll down on the second page is the northern. Um, sort of triangular parcel up here. Um, this is where we had initially discussed doing some sort of solar project. Um, or solar solar development uh when and our engineers um. Knew that and considered that and. They did the math and when all was said and done and the setbacks were put in, there only ended up being about three point nine acres of developable. Full space for that, which really is just not worth the effort. And then I will also note that this um dashed line here through lot four would be an access. Route to those additional to the solar development if it did happen. Um, and if the solar development doesn't happen. Um, then that access route really would be necessary. And I think that. Pretty much covers everything.
Is there a, is there? A cost? Was there a cost analysis of what it might cost to?
Um, there.
Work.
That was.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say there's there's no cost analysis as a part of this particular study. It was really just to understand. Um. You know, baseline feasibility for different types of uses that the site could accommodate.
So. Basically, I heard you say warehouse, office, medical.
Yeah, so. Light industrial, okay, so. Warehouse, yes, that's an immediate need within the community. Um, would definitely be able to be supported by the site. Office and medical also totally potential uh. Uh, definitely could be supported by the community. And then the other aspect here is like light manufacturing um and industrial use. Um, which would really tie into the greater regional need for. Um, space for those tier one and tier two supply chain businesses for micron.
So. And see, I personally feel like there's a lot of office vacant space. And work at. Um, you know, medical, I mean, it's changing all the time. Warehouse, I mean, there are some pretty big. Or a big large company locally that does a lot of warehousing in our market. So I mean, I don't.
Pretty reasonable.
I don't think we want to be in the mar- the warehouse business, right? Um, that's my feeling. I know that we kind of talked about all that.
Hmm.
Um, I mean, it's good to know what could be laid out here. Um, and so the little other piece over to the pie out of all that acreage only like. Three point nine is good, right? Because the rest of it's like wetlands and then.
It's the topography for that pie triangle at the top really does.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think I've remembered that from years ago, but um the solar thing, I guess, makes sense there.
And the the three point nine for the additional lands is also taking solar into account the setbacks that you would need for that. Um, it reduces the amount of land you would actually be able to put solar on to.
Five acres to get a megawatt. One of the issues for saying what. Um, all new projects is the demand for greater power. So part of the thought going into this. Is that there was power generation on site that would actually be a great incentive uh to show prospective. Uh, developers there, what we've heard from NICE for the two intended projects. Um, in Auburn and up in Port Byron, that's three to five years out. Um, so if we did have something like solar on site, that may be able to scale a little bit faster and we would provide. Form of uh the primary revenue, the IDA for just lease the land. But at three point nine acres, it's not enough to to scale. We'd have to be looking at much more of the property to do that, so.
I think we'll be up to ten.
You get about two megawatts at ten, but then as Grace pointed out, you've got to take a look at setbacks. And and everything else, more and more of what we're seeing is um four to five baseline megawatt. Generation. So it's it's becoming a huge. Demand.
That's the conclusion.
Let's say, let's get his questions here.
This is great.
How do you want to proceed? Well, I think. You know, I'd I'd like to. Read through the email and. Look at the whole thing.
Digest it a little bit and then come back.
Yeah, a lot of information. I did ask Grace to.
You know.
Not go through it in lengthy detail, knowing our auditors were gonna be here today, so. Um, if you have all the information, can provide more as as necessary. Um.
I think the files probably big enough.
Yeah. There there's plenty in there.
Is there a motion to go in the executive session for uh both wees? So moved. A property second on favor.
Aye.
And post. You can stay if you want.
Sure.
Nothing or shaking, I hope. There is, we'll throw you out.
Sure.
I don't think anyone's in the building, so.
Nobody's in there. They can't, they can't.
Are we still recording or no?
You can only get out now. You can't get in.
Yeah.